Good evening and welcome to the January 11, 2021 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one item on our official agenda, which is to talk about the stormwater program fee and some considerations therein. But we had a couple of very unfortunate events occur over the last few days in the city of Gaithersburg, and we have our chief here to talk about it. And I wanted to turn it over to our city manager, who also wants to say a few words. So we'll start with you, Tanisha. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, on Friday, January 8, we had an officer-involved shooting, which resulted in the death of 24-year-old Kwamina Okron. Mr. Okron's death was a tragic loss of life for his family and friends. We understand that the incident has raised many questions in our community. As our nation grapples with police reform efforts, which have taken on much-needed sense of urgency since the protests for racial justice of last summer, many are calling for instituting best practices for investigating and adjudicating police-involved shootings and use of force. Here in Gaithersburg, many of those reform efforts were already integral to our policies and practices and have been for several years. In this case, using an outside independent agency to conduct the investigation of police-involved shootings has been in place for a decade. Montgomery County Police are leading the investigation, and the results of their investigation will also be independently reviewed by the Howard County State's Attorney due to an already-established agreement between the two state's attorney's offices. That agreement stipulates that when an officer-involved shooting involving injury or death occurs in one county, the other county's state's attorney office will review the event. At this early stage of the investigation, we all likely have more questions than answers available to make a fully informed assessment of what happened. We are committed to providing the mayor and council in the community with as much information as possible without compromising the investigation and with the understanding that we are not the lead agency for this investigation, and the decision to release information ultimately rests with the county. I want the community to understand that thorough investigations that are done appropriately take time, and the lack of details this early in the investigation is not an indication of a lack of transparency, but instead, a challenging balance of providing the public with the answers they deserve while protecting the integrity of the process of the investigation. We fully expect the investigation to provide the details we need to make fact-based judgments. Chief Sroka will now give a short briefing on the facts surrounding this case that are currently available, and we will address any questions we can following his remarks. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update on the officer-involved shooting that occurred on Friday, January 8. The Street Crimes Unit received credible information that Mr. Kwamina Okron, who's 24 years old, was carrying a handgun and was prohibited from owning or possessing a firearm. Also, they knew that he had a criminal history for robbery, gun offenses, and that he was recently released from incarceration. And those officers believed that he was going to commit another robbery. Based on this information, the surveillance was initiated. The four on-duty, plainclothes police officers attempted to stop Mr. Okron while walking in the area of 14 South Frederick Avenue. They identified themselves as police officers. Mr. Okron fled, and the officers pursued him on foot. At approximately 5:53 PM in the area of 12 South Frederick Avenue, a shooting occurred, and Mr. Okron was shot by at least one officer. A handgun was recovered from the scene. Officers attempted lifesaving measures and radioed for the assistance of medical personnel. Mr. Okron was declared deceased at the scene. As per the longstanding agreement between the Gaithersburg Police and the Montgomery County Police, the Major Crimes Division assumed full investigatory authority for the criminal investigation. We are currently on the third day of this ongoing and independent criminal investigation by the Montgomery County Police to gather all of the facts. As such, I am unable to provide any additional information relative to the active investigation. I understand that you and many people in the community have questions, and I ask for your patience in waiting for a full, fair, and impartial investigation to be completed. I anticipate there will be more facts and details that over time will be released by Montgomery County, thus allowing all of us to make an informed judgment. Unfortunately, on Sunday, just yesterday, while officers were detailed to the vigil for Mr. Okron at that same location at the 14 South Frederick Avenue. It started off very peacefully around 4:00 PM. There was about 25 people in attendance initially, and then the crowd size diminished to around 10. And that smaller group of people around 6:11 PM were still at that vigil. While officers were still detailed there, a call was dispatched for a 25-year-old male that had been shot. Officers responded, attempted lifesaving resuscitation efforts. However, unfortunately, that was unsuccessful, and the victim subsequently died at a local area hospital. As of now, there have been no arrests, and that case is still under active investigation. If you have any questions that anybody has to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Tanisha, for your statements and for the update. I'll just say on behalf of the Mayor and Council that we are following everything very closely and understand that this is an active investigation and may take some time for the facts to come out. And we will wait for those facts and base whatever statements or actions that we take at whatever point on the facts that come out of the investigation. And we ask for patience from the public. We're as interested as everybody else in ascertaining the facts. And so I'll just leave it at that for now. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Not seeing any? Then we thank you very much, Chief. Tanisha, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Chief, I'm not sure if you want to share the information hotline phone number, if anyone has information regarding the case. If you don't have it handy, I think I may. Anyone with information regarding either incident is asked to contact the Major Crimes Division and callers may remain anonymous. So we'll just add that piece to it, and we look forward to the details coming forward in the future.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much, Chief.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Tech team, we shall move now into our main discussion item. If you could bring up Patrick Fitzgerald from our Stormwater Project Manager, Elizabeth Treadway, Principal Program Manager, and Lynn Maury, Consulting Program Manager, to lead us in presentation on our stormwater program fee.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I'm Pat Fitzgerald. I'm a project manager for the Stormwater Program. Please bring up packet page five.
Welcome, guys.
Thank you. This evening, we will be discussing the reassessment of the stormwater program fee. This will be the first of two related work sessions, the second of which is planned for March. As you recall, Beth Forbes, our program manager, provided you with a program update back in June of 2020. Some of tonight's information may serve as a refresher to the items that were discussed then, but we have since engaged the services of a professional consulting firm, Wood, to analyze the program in detail in order to reevaluate the fee, which is collected annually from the city's property owners. I'm joined by two representatives from our consulting firm, Lynn Maury and Elizabeth Treadway, who previously worked with city staff to develop the current rate model, which has been in place since FY '16. Tonight, Wood will present their evaluation of the program, but specifically, we would like feedback from the council members on the following three significant issues. First, staff would like guidance on the potential use of the fund to capture supporting services provided by city staff outside of the stormwater program. Second, staff would like to discuss the enhancement of public engagement through outreach and education. Finally, staff requests feedback on the repair and maintenance needs for stormwater facilities within common ownership communities. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Lynn Maury.
Thanks, Patrick. Next page. Elizabeth and I appreciate the opportunity to be before you again to discuss your city stormwater program. I'm going to provide a summary of the evaluation we've done of the stormwater program and associated estimated costs and staffing levels, and then also walk through an overview of the maintenance options for common ownership stormwater facilities. And then we'll end with next steps in the rate study. Next page. Next page. So our first step in doing this evaluation was to meet with city staff that are involved in the city stormwater program. So that is primarily the stormwater division, but it also included staff from Public Works, Finance, and the GIS group. And city staff looked at their stormwater program and created this list of their primary activity areas. And we used this list to get a better understanding of the city's stormwater program. So you can see, it runs the gamut from, you know, design of capital improvement projects, plan review, inspection programs, repairs of the conveyance infrastructure, illicit discharge, the stormwater pollution prevention plan, and outreach and education. Next page. So the stormwater division currently consists of six staff, and the project manager position was recently filled in January. The staff is fully engaged in the current program and have a full plate. The FY '21 budget has the staff cost for stormwater, the stormwater division, at $690,000. The stormwater division staff are the only staff that are currently funded through the stormwater fee. And as you can see, they did an evaluation of their staff time and did percentage of time that they spend on each of the stormwater program areas, resulting in you can see that the bulk of, you know, time is dedicated to the CIP program, development plan review, inspections, and repairs and drainage. Next page. Since the current staff are fully loaded with the current program, we talked about challenges that they see in the upcoming program. And so I'm going to walk through some of the areas where they're concerned that they don't have the bandwidth to address some of these additional tasks. So they see that there's additional public outreach needed for CIP projects. And this is, you know, very important in getting the public engaged and getting feedback in the capital improvement projects. And they're managing an increasing number of projects to comply with the impervious area reduction that is required through the MS4 permit. They want to update the watershed management plans in the next five years. And then they have a large design contract procurement in 2022. As far as repairs and infrastructure, a program to proactively assess the conditions of the city's stormwater pipes and then developing a prioritized system of repairs is something that's been on the radar for a while, but there just hasn't been staff available to address this program. As far as MS4 reporting with the new MS4 permit, there's additional metrics that need to be tracked, and staff also wants to integrate the reporting with the new asset management system. Next page. The inspection program of stormwater facilities, there's an increasing number of stormwater facilities that need to be inspected, and through the MS4 permit, they need to be inspected more frequently. And there is more coordination of enforcement with the Planning and Code Administration Division that needs to take place. As far as the GIS and database, staff needs to populate the new asset management system and verify that data, and then also integrate the asset management system with the inspection program. Next page. So we did an evaluation of full-time employees dedicated to stormwater. So the current program is covered by the six current employees, and the breakdown per stormwater program area is reflected in this chart. But looking at the amount of time, staff evaluated the amount of time they would need to dedicate to address those tasks that I just went through in addition to staffing, the maintenance of common ownership facilities programs that we're going to address later. But, you know, this evaluation resulted in, it looks like, an additional employee in the stormwater division would be needed to adequately address these programs. Next page. So the stormwater program is not fully supported only by stormwater division staff. There, so there are several divisions that support various stormwater program activities. So for repairs and infrastructure, there's a lot of support that comes from the Operations Division, you know, performing maintenance and managing contracts for maintenance, doing inlet cleaning, tracking complaints, and running the street sweeping. And Engineering Services manages the maintenance and repair of road culverts. Next page. For inspections, these are supported by the Operations Division for dam inspections, and Planning and Code Administration performs the routine erosion and sediment control inspections. For the stormwater pollution prevention plan at the Public Works Facility, this is implemented by the Operations Division. And for illicit discharge detection and elimination program, the Planning and Code Administration Division responds to complaints and handles enforcement for this program. Next page. The GIS Division supports the mapping of the stormwater data that is in the city's GIS system, so that stormwater facilities and the conveyance infrastructure, they are providing support for the asset management system rollout, and they also support the stormwater fee billing data management and coordinate the billing of that fee. Next page. So looking at the other division staffing, we also did a similar exercise with them to estimate the amount of time that they spend on each of the program areas, the stormwater program areas. And that evaluation showed that the fiscal year '21 cost for the other division staffing is approximately $230,000 per year with almost a full FTE in the Operations Division and planning and code almost at .75 in FTE with lower levels of support from GIS, Engineering Services, and Neighborhood Services. That support primarily comes in the repair of the maintenance infrastructure and in the inspections program. Next page. To incorporate the proactive inspection and maintenance program of the conveyance infrastructure, that would require the support of both the stormwater and Operations Division. And considering the climate change resilience of the system is also very important looking into the future. As for the street sweeping and inlet cleaning programs, both the stormwater and Operations Division can take additional time to better track the material collected in order for the city to claim alternative restoration credit for these activities to comply with the impervious area restoration plan. So as Patrick stated in his intro, we'd just like to discuss with you potentially using the stormwater fund to pay for staffing that comes from other divisions other than the stormwater division. Currently, they're... These other divisions do not charge to the stormwater fund. So it seemed that that may be a difficult thing to do in the current accounting system, but it could also be done through transfers to the budgets of those divisions from the stormwater fund.
Lynn, did we want to discuss that now, or do we want to wait till the end of the presentation to come back to the three discussion points?
Yeah, it's up to you. We can wait till the end.
I think we should wait till the end.
Certainly. Okay, next page. The other area where staff, you know, wanted to discuss and get your feedback on is the outreach program. There's been interest in expanding the Rainscapes program to include permeable pavement and other program enhancements and needs that staff just hasn't had the time to address have been website updates, emailed newsletters to stakeholders, doing additional articles, signage presentations and workshops and that kind of thing. And then the biggest item was expansion of funds for the Chesapeake Bay Trust Grants. There's increasing public interest in getting these grants to construct stormwater BMPs on private property. So that's something we can discuss at the end of the presentation as well. Next page. We also looked at the direct expenses related to the stormwater program. So these include the stormwater program operating expenses and other contracted services. So we based it on the FY '20 budget along with discussion of the stormwater division staff on future needs. So a reassessment of contracted costs moving into the future is reassessing the cost for a pipe inspection program. The city and public facility inspection was a program starting in FY '22. Above ground city facility maintenance is another contracted service. And then, as we will discuss later, additional outreach funding for the Grants and Rainscapes program. The direct expenses are distributed primarily to stormwater management and then secondarily to the Operations Division with some minor funding to Engineering Services in the GIS Division. Next page. So this chart shows the direct expenses reflecting growth over the next five years in the CIP program that's related to the stream restoration monitoring program, anticipating growth in the public outreach program. But it stays between about $1 million to $1.2 million per year for direct expenses. Next page. The capital program is a large investment of the city primarily to meet the impervious area restoration requirements. So we primarily took the projects from the FY '21 budget, discussed with staff the timing of some of the projects that are scheduled for later in the CIP, and then some new or reassessed capital cost for replacing corrugated metal pipe starting in FY '24, future impervious acre treatment. It's unknown what that requirement will be in the next MS4 permit, but, you know, staff wants to plan for that in the stormwater program, starting in FY '28, and then starting watershed plans, updating of the watershed plans in fiscal year '24. So these costs are currently around $2 million, you know, rising up to $4 million in a couple of years, and then leveling off at around $2.5 million in the future per year. Next page. Next page. So we discussed with staff various options for maintenance of the common ownership facilities. And this is an issue because the facilities need to be maintained in order to maintain credits for impervious area restoration and to perform their function to improve, you know, water quality and to prevent downstream flooding. So the first thing we did was to perform a field evaluation of 16 facilities in consultation with city staff. The facilities that we looked at in the field were determined to guide the cost evaluation that we went through. So the field evaluation of those 16 facilities confirmed that there's a strong correlation between the age of the facilities and the condition and the need for maintenance. The county's GIS contains 92 facilities that have common ownership. Four are currently scheduled for retrofit by the city. So in our cost evaluation, we looked at the remaining 88 facilities. Next page. This table, excuse me. This table shows a breakdown of the common ownership facilities by type and date built. And so these are the 88 facilities that we included in our cost evaluation. As you can see from the table, that there are more bio-retention environmental site design and infiltration practices being built now, and that pond construction and hydrodynamic structures are becoming less popular as stormwater facilities over the past 10 years. Next page. So for the options evaluation, the four oldest facilities, there were two ponds and two underground facilities. And based on our field evaluation, those ponds were in need of maintenance. And it's assumed because of the age of the underground facilities that they also will need serious maintenance. So the priority repairs were those four oldest facilities. And then we classified Phase II repairs for the next grouping of facilities by date built of the '86 to 2002 facilities, repairing and replacing those over the next seven years. So all of the three options that I discuss assume that the communities will remain responsible for mowing and trash removal of these facilities. Next page. The first option that we looked at was the city taking complete ownership of the facilities. So the city would take over the routine maintenance and all repairs for these facilities to make sure that they're maintaining their design function. The cost evaluation included the staff time for management of the maintenance and repairs, the timing of the priority and Phase II repairs where in the 10-year program to get those all done in that 10 years. And then we assumed that the city would take over routine maintenance at 10 facilities a year added for maintenance. The estimated cost for this Option 1 was $280,000 to $370,000 per year. was 280,000 to 370,000 per year. Next page. Option two is for the city to take over what was for the city to perform the initial maintenance to bring the stormwater facilities back to their design function if needed, and then hand them back over to the community ownership facilities to maintain them and to their design function. So the cost of the repairs are the same for the, as in option one. There's less staff time because they're not managing the routine maintenance as well. We did include time for city attorney to assist with executing the enforceable agreements. The estimated cost per year of option two was 250,000 to 261,000 per year. Next page. So this option is for the city to do the needed maintenance, you know, the same as in option two, not to take over the routine maintenance, but then to execute agreements with the communities to reimburse the city for the costs of the repair. And there would also be part of the agreement that the communities would perform the maintenance in the future to keep the facilities operational. So this cost includes the staff time for executing the agreements and management of the repairs, conducting the priority and phase two repairs in the first 10 years. And we estimated that for cost estimation purposes that the communities would reimburse the city on a 10 year repairment period at 2% interest. So the cost for this option started at 225,000 per year, but as the reimbursements come in, it eventually the program pays for itself because you're getting the reimbursements from the communities in to pay for the future repairs. Next page. So this table shows the cumulative costs for a 10 year program for the three options. As you can see, option one is the only one that includes the routine maintenance costs. The the cost for staff time for option two and three are less than option one because staff is not managing the routine maintenance. But this just gives you a snapshot of an estimated cost of these programs over a 10 year time frame cumulatively. Next page. Do we want to discuss the options now or go through next steps first?
We should probably go ahead and have our discussion of the options. But I'd like tech team, if you could bring up Dennis and Beth Forbes as well to join us in this part of the conversation, that'd be great. So I'll start from the, I'll start the conversation with the common ownership communities question, the last question, which seems to me probably the biggest question. And the thing that it sort of drives my thinking on this is that whether you live in a common ownership community or you live in a non, I'm just gonna say HOA because it's a mouthful of state common ownership communities. You live in a non HOA community and you live in an HOA community, you're still paying the same rate for your stormwater fee based on the property you have. The difference is if you live in a non HOA community and there's a stormwater facility that needs to be maintained, upgraded, whatever, it's the city's facility. It's not because there's no HOA, it's the city's responsibility. So that remediation of that facility is coming out of your stormwater fee. However, if you live in an HOA community and the HOA happens to have this stormwater facility and we say, okay, we'll do some initial, the initial repair and either you're going to reimburse us or you're going to have to take over the maintenance of this thing. So it's sort of an unexpected, potentially large expense for people in HOA community. Then what's going to likely happen is the HOA is going to raise dues in order to, in order to pay for this. So in essence, if you live in an HOA community, you're going to end up paying twice. More than you're going to end up paying more in practicality, in practical reality than if you lived in a non HOA community. So I think there's some equity issue, although of course, from a city standpoint, as the mayor of the city and council, I know we have a we want to be fiscally conservative and responsible. We'd like to find the most cost effective way to do this, which obviously would be option three. I'm not sure that's the morally right option here. So that's, that's the way I'm thinking about the HOA question. And you know, I'll just backtrack and look at the bigger picture about stormwater. The whole stormwater requirements thing, it's, 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 it's great. It's necessary. We want to remediate and do our part to affect the health of our streams and waterways and then ultimately our big shared one, which is the Chesapeake. But it's always a challenge for a city like ours because we're a pay as you go city and these are big expenses. And we know, and what makes it worse is that the requirements for our permit are, to use a stormwater metaphor, murky. They're always murky. We don't know what we're going to have to spend and we don't know when we're going to have to spend it. And so we're sort of accruing for these big expenses, but it's hard to do it in a really strategic way without, you know, anyway, it's always been a big challenge for us. And here we are, you know, years and years. It's probably seven or eight years since we started talking about our stormwater program. And we're still trying to get our arms around different parts of it. Ideas like expansions of the rainscapes grant to cover a private expenditure to put in permeable pavers, I think that makes sense. I'm not sure that the, that the amount of the grant like that we were giving for rain barrels or something would go very far when putting in permeable pavers. But I'm fine for the application of that. And in terms of the stat, like applying stormwater or stormwater fund for staff expenses in other departments. I mean, it's, that's kind of a tough call. We have a very, you know, we're, we have a limited amount of resources. You know, particularly now, like I've been in talks with, with the fairgrounds who had to cancel their fair because of the pandemic and they, they have one of the larger stormwater fee bills in the whole city. And the idea that we would find any other use for this limited resource when we're, when the fee is really impacting some of our property owners at this point. It's hard for me, but I, at the same time, I see it is real time that staff puts into it. So this is a, it's a good question. I'm interested in, after, after I hear from the council, I'd be interested in the year hearing what Tanisha has to say about, about the situation as well. And I see Neil's hand go up, go right ahead, Neil, and then Rob after, Rob afterward. Neil, you're muted.
I was unmuted and then I muted myself. Good work. Just a couple of quick questions, just to clarify some of the data that we saw. So on that last slide, where we were looking at potentially millions of dollars of work on common ownership, community properties. Is that completely incremental? In other words, it's all additional costs on top of our existing or proposed other stormwater projects? Is that what we're seeing here?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Yeah, it's, it's not currently being done. It would be something that we're adding to our program.
Okay. And going back a few slides previously. The what I saw was 690,000 a year in staff time currently. And an average of a little between 2 and 1/2 and 3 million dollars a year over the next five years for capital costs. And those are separate, right? The 2 and 1/2 doesn't include the staff time. Correct. So we're looking at roughly 3 and 1/2 million dollars a year currently. And then there's the initial options of covering additional staff time that's already being spent. And then other potential projects to increase plus this. I mean, what's the current revenue that is being brought in from our stormwater fee? Is it something like 4 million dollars a year? Is that what I'm remembering? It's been a while.
Yeah, I believe it's a little bit more than that, but it's in that, in that range. Yes.
Okay. So the challenge is we've got, we've got expenses and revenue are relatively in sync today. And we're looking at a lot of potential additional expenses on top of it. So there's no easy solution. So I'm going to noodle around with it a little bit more and yield the floor to my colleagues.
Okay, we'll go to Rob. Thank you, Neil.
Is yielding the floor one of our procedures? Not aware of that.
I'll take it back if you don't want it, Rob.
Thank you for the presentation. I guess I'll do the reverse order, which is the order, the order in the slides is if, if personnel outside of the stormwater management division are incurring costs that are chargeable to a fee regime that we have set up and for that purpose. And Lynn tells me that that's okay. Then I'm fine with that. And then the question I would have for Tanisha is how do you, how do you implement that? I know we've got Cronos or some of the time tracking time tracking system, but does that allow for incremental billing to certain cost objectives? Or are we biting off something that'll cause just more problems by charging to certain pools?
Yeah, there's an administrative, you know, we can handle it administratively. And I think there's a couple of different options that we would pursue. We actually talked about this on our preview call a little bit. So Patrick or Beth or Dennis, you guys feel free to jump in. But there are different ways to handle it. I've been in places where, you know, the person is already set up to be funded. It's a funding split essentially. And so the work that they do automatically, you know, gets charged back to the right place. We have to see what our current software is capable of, but I'm not, I wouldn't be concerned about creating, you know, an administrative burden from that perspective. There's a way to handle it.
Okay.
Rob, there'd be a couple of ways. You could do a percentage for each employee that's currently doing those tasks. So you're not doing it hour by hour, or you could do hour by hour. I think every, any system we'd be able to set up. One is more labor intensive, of course, if we are doing hour by hour instead of a percentage, say. You know, the biggest users of those are actually our maintenance crews in the public works department who go up and clean out particular areas, either brush or just general cleanup. Those are, could be tracked by tickets or could be tracked by percentage of employee.
Okay, thank you. So, so yeah, I'm, I'm I'm fine with actually either, either direction. So if Lynn says it's chargeable, you can do it. And Tanisha and Dennis, you guys say that this is something that can be implemented without too much of a headache or administrative burden. I'm fine with it. However, you know, I understand it's easier to just charge to one pot of money. So you're paying for, for these folks outside of stormwater management out of general revenue. And you know, if that's the easier way of doing it, I'm fine with that as well. With respect to the stormwater management program and the common ownership committee, communities, I'm kind of where Judd is. And so I think we talked about this before. You know, I was kind of, I don't want to say taken aback, but concerned that folks in, in HOA communities are paying stormwater fees, but then they're also paying for their stormwater infrastructure. So essentially, to some extent, the HOA folks are paying for their own infrastructure and they're paying for the non HOA community infrastructure. And I didn't see anything in the presentation about how many facilities exist in the city outside of the HOA and what are their costs? Do we have that? Or is that something that that's not readily available?
In terms of commercial properties or other residential?
In terms of residential, I would guess, because I'm guessing the HOAs are paying for their own residential stormwater management. And then the question I would have is geared towards the stormwater management facilities that aren't in the HOAs, but are in residential areas. So what the stormwater fees are being, that are being paid by every person or household in the state that has the imperial surface. And those funds are going to those projects. That's what I was kind of.
Not sure. The number's off the top of my head. It's, the most common facilities are either city owned facilities, commercial owned facilities or common ownership facilities. So those would be kind of one off. I'm not sure the exact number off the top of my head, though.
Okay. We do have a breakdown of the ownership and types of facilities that we could provide.
Okay, I'd be interested in seeing that and not to single out Mike, but he's the only one of the five of us that lives in a non HOA community. So I'd be concerned about, you know, the facilities, for example, in his neighborhood and, and like neighborhoods around the city. So yeah, the equity issue drives me to be pretty much in sync with where Judd is in that issue. Was there another issue we were supposed to discuss?
The second was the expansion of the outreach program.
Yeah, no, I'm in favor. I think that the more that we can reach out to the community to access the programs that we have and think of innovative programs. Like, for example, we've got the rain barrel program, which my understanding in discussions with the environmental affairs committee is that it's not very well utilized. I wish it was better utilized and we can think of better ways to kind of capture at point of source, the water and rain barrels are a great way to do that. Rain gardens are a great way to do that rain scape. So yeah, not only outreach, but also thinking of ways to fund better programs in the city to address those types of issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. We'll move over to Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me say before I get into some tough questions about the proposals that of course, we all acknowledge that the requirements of our permit and federal and state laws are mandates upon the city. And so as the mayor alluded to earlier, we're in a bit of a bind here because, you know, as much as in principle, we want to do things to help the environment, we're also subject to certain regulatory mandates that require us to meet certain thresholds and targets for mitigating stormwater impacts. And I just want to salute the mission focused approach and the creativity of the staff who's been involved in this and putting together some of these options for us to consider. So certainly none of the questions that I'm going to be asking are any criticism of the work of our staff. But I think these are, these are tough issues. And some of my colleagues alluded to the fact that, you know, I know there's a separate discussion that we're going to be having about our fee structure. And that's going to happen in a different meeting or work session. But you, you can't really disconnect the two. Because as we're deciding on what options we want to consider, we are necessarily creating the need for more funding if these options are going to be more expensive. And so we sort of have to keep that front and center as a general observation, even if we're not talking specifically about the precise fee amount that we're going to be calculating. You know, at this particular moment, you know, everything is going to be sort of reverse engineered. Once we decide what we want to spend money on, then we have to figure out how much to charge for it. And I think we need to be really careful about that. Because, you know, if we're, if we're talking about it in a bubble and saying, yeah, these options all sound nice, but only talking about the actual dollar impacts on our property owners later. It can be easy to slip into a pattern of saying, yeah, all these things sound good. Let's do them. And then later we're sort of, you know, stuck in between a rock and a hard place where we've already agreed to certain expansions. And now we have to figure out how to fund them. And the only option may be to increase the stormwater fee significantly. And I think Neil was getting at that as well. So whether or not, you know, certain operational costs are paid for through our general fund, which which is funded through different revenue sources, but primarily through our property owners taxes. Or whether we are funding these things through a fee based dedicated fund. Ultimately, our property owners are still paying for all of that. So a couple of questions with all of that in mind and sort of the background. Just want to confirm that when you talk about the facilities that we are considering these three options for, we're only talking about the residential common ownership facilities. We're not talking about any of the commercial facilities that are out there, right?
Correct.
Okay. And getting into more specifics about the, the particular options proposed. I don't know if some of these questions are going to be sort of more legal type questions for Lynn and her folks or technical questions for our stormwater folks. So I defer to you on who's best to answer these types of questions, but I guess for option one is the idea that we will necessarily have to take on all of the 90 something common ownership stormwater facilities. Or that we would sort of selectively do so, or what if a particular common ownership community doesn't want to agree to give us ownership of their facility? What happens then? How does that work?
Right, yeah. Part of that definitely might be more on the legal side, but in terms of what we're looking at right now from a cost perspective and including or not including in the program. It's assuming that we would essentially take over the ownership of all those facilities and the routine maintenance going forward. But the, the cost, taking into consideration that only a certain amount of them are anticipated to have significant repairs and maintenance due within the next 10 years or so. So we're prioritizing what we think the actual work would, would be, but theoretically, we would be taking over all, you know, 88 facilities. 92 facilities, if you include the ones that we are already planning on retrofitting for our, for our MS4 program.
And I do think that there would be a legal issue if we didn't take all, if we did a partial.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm kind of imagining is, you know, I'm just sort of playing out the theoretical here. What if we went with option one? And, you know, 90% of the, the common ownership communities were like, yeah, sure, no problem here. We're signing the deed and we're handing over the, the, the the, the facility to you. And I guess it's also a separate question whether we're taking control of the the land, the actual real estate that the facility is on, or whether we're just taking ownership of the the facility, but not the land that it's on. And that's a whole nother separate legal question. But what if, you know, 10% or 5% of the, of the community said, for whatever reason, we don't want to give it to you. And then we'd be stuck in a situation, sort of a different kind of equity situation where if we're not treating all of these communities equally, is that a problem? So, you know, I don't, I don't have the answers to these questions, but I think we need to ask them and think about them because there's some real concerns and complexities that are raised by this. And then on a related note, you know, we're going to have future development in the city. What happens to future facilities, future stormwater facilities? Are we going to have to agree to take on ownership of every future stormwater facility in a common ownership community that's built after this point? I don't know if staff has kind of already thought of that, or if they're just kind of figuring that because those facilities would be newer, that again, as we're sort of you know, planning out and amortizing when exactly we're going to have to maintain and repair facilities that, that newer facilities wouldn't have to be dealt with until many years or decades from now, but they'd still have to be dealt with, right?
I think the assumption has been all along that if you take over HOA facilities, you would take them over from this point forward. Any previous facilities and any new facilities, that would be how it would be treated. It'd be similar to how Montgomery County does it at this point. I believe Montgomery County has not taken over the land underneath or with the facilities. They just typically take over the maintenance responsibilities for the facilities. So there agreements that are made between each of the jurisdictions.
And do, maybe you, maybe you know this, I don't know, but for the county's approach, do we have any sense as to how good the, first of all, let me ask this. Does the county then charge the common ownership community back for the for the maintenance costs? Or does it just incur those costs and absorb them?
I think in terms of the major maintenance costs, actually doing the facility, those are absorbed through the stormwater fee. I still believe, and Beth can help me with this question. The general maintenance, like mowing and litter pickup, those are still the responsibility of the HOA facilities. The county has not taken that component over.
So the notion that we have in our option three that, you know, we could essentially bill the common ownership community to reimburse us is not something that the county does, right?
No, that is not their option. They basically pick option two where we're doing the maintenance for the, the structure itself or the facilities themselves, but not the mowing or the trash pickup.
Okay, my understanding of option two, I think was a little different than that. That it, that it wasn't just that we weren't doing the, you know, more basic maintenance, but that we weren't really doing any of the maintenance. We were just going to do the major repair and then hand it back to the to the common ownership community. Maybe staff can sort of clarify what option two is really supposed to entail.
That's correct. Yeah, the county would be more of option one with the routine maintenance. And option two is basically doing the same upfront cost, but not having the, the routine maintenance going forward.
Okay, so bear with me here, and I appreciate this. Option two, the suggestion is we do the major repair as needed. We hand it back to the community. And based on an enforceable agreement, we expect that the community will do not just the sort of minimal surface repairs like mowing, but will continue to do the maintenance. The serious maintenance of the facility going forward after we do our sort of one time major repair, right?
Yep.
Okay. What if, what if a common ownership community in that circumstance doesn't do it, doesn't do the maintenance? Then what? Or even in option three, what if a common ownership community doesn't pay us back? What do we do? You know, we can move to try to enforce, I guess, if we have a contract with them. But what if they, you know, what if they don't have the assets to pay us back? You know, what, what do we do? Are we going to be suing a bunch of common ownership communities because they didn't do the maintenance under option two or didn't pay us under option three?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's essentially why we're having the conversation because that's, that's the position we're in right now is, you know, we're responsible for enforcing them. So if we go out, we do an inspection, it's, it's not meeting its design intent, then we we have to give them a violation. If they don't do it, then we have to enforce it. So it's, it's, it's very difficult. It's cumbersome to have to have that amount of enforcement over all those facilities. So so by taking over the, the responsibility ourselves, then we have more control over those facilities.
And then Ryan, I would assume under option two, where we're actually going in and making the improvements and creating new agreements, because we would create new agreements. We would indicate to them that we could, I believe this is legally possible in Maryland, assess the HOA for the parcel that the facility is on. As a lien, if we went in and did the improvements, that doesn't help them pay the improvements. But it does give some mechanism to collect that fee back if we actually went back in and made the improvements again.
Okay. And the projected costs over the course of, you know, 10 fiscal years or wherever it was in the presentation. When you look at that slide that, you know, shows the the costs of the three options.
That gives page 29?
Yeah. That one, and I don't know if tech team can pull that up. 29. Okay, that one. That's only, that's for 10 years. And, you know, we've talked about, you know, the, the fact that depending on the options we choose and how we structure them, we'd go well beyond 10 years and kind of indefinitely into the future. Option three there. The estimate of the cost assumes we're getting timely and fully paid back, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I mean, again, I, I know it's a separate discussion, but I think we need to keep all of this stuff in mind as we're going forward. Tech team, that's all I needed to see from the presentation. Thanks. So another question I have is sort of the no build option, if you will. And I think Patrick was kind of making reference to that earlier is that sort of the status quo is that right now our staff goes out and tells a common ownership community who owns a private facility. Your facility is not in compliance, right? And so you either need to get it in compliance or we have to find you. Right? Or something like that, right? And so the concern is that that's not really working right now because it's a, what? It's too much of a burden on the, on those communities that are being approached. Or they're not able to pay the fines, or they're not able to pay for the repairs and maintenance that are needed.
Correct. Yeah. Looking at the, the repairs that we believe are going to be needed over the next 10 years. We think that there's going to be a lot of hardship on the, the common ownership facilities that they won't be able to pay easily for, for those repairs.
Okay. And I'm, I'm not trying to ask this as a gotcha question. I'm really not. I'm just trying to understand and weigh the, the impacts here, but the common ownership communities that own these facilities. I mean, they've sort of had notice since the beginning of the obligation to maintain these facilities, right?
That's fair to say, yeah.
Okay. So it's not like, at least theoretically, it's not a surprise that all of a sudden we're imposing new obligations on them to maintain these facilities in compliance with whatever our city code or state laws are that require a certain level of maintenance of these facilities and a certain level of functionality, right?
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that. I, I think maybe the common property owner maybe is not well educated on, on the topic and maybe they don't fully understand it, but yeah, in theory, I agree, yeah.
Fair point, fair point. I'm not talking about sort of, you know, the average individual unit owner in an HOA or a condo development might not really be aware of all this stuff, but sort of, you know, as a legal foundation, kind of, you know, the basics of, you know, there's a corporate entity that's a common ownership community and it it took ownership of this, this piece of property within its, you know, community. And therefore, you know, was subject to the obligations to maintain it.
To answer Ryan's question a bit more specifically, and I know that initially the common ownership communities are controlled by the developer. But before the developer turns the project over to the city, they do sign an inspection and maintenance agreement, which is binding on the common ownership community as it goes forward.
Fair enough. And, and so as with all common ownership communities under state law, the developer sort of acts as the HOA until such time as they hand over control of the entity to the elected common ownership body. Which then takes on all the responsibilities that the developer has basically signed them up for.
Correct.
Right, okay. So I mean, the mayor raised this issue of equity, which I think is a fair point. But I think there's a lot of different angles to the equity question. And I think we need to sort of consider it from all these different angles because you know, there's also the question as to, you know, some people might have the perspective that yes, we understand that everybody's paying a stormwater fee, whether they live in a common ownership community or not. But you know, are we sort of, for lack of a better term, bailing out an entity that has an obligation on a particular private piece of property to do something and isn't doing it or isn't able to do it? You know, is there a question of equity with respect to, you know, certain common ownership communities that have had a rougher go than others financially and whether or not, you know, we should be distinguishing between those or whether we're even allowed to and prioritizing ones that, you know, either had more difficulties that weren't their fault. Or how do we deal with ones who may have had some difficulties managing their assets and maybe it was their fault? I don't know. And again, I'm not blaming any particular community. I'm just trying to figure out how these issues all interrelate. And, you know, there's the question of if it's going to cost us millions of extra dollars in stormwater expenditures that we're going to have to figure out how to raise revenue for either through a fee or otherwise. Are those funds that could be going elsewhere to other priorities? That's always a question as we're weighing different priorities in, in local government. I don't know the answer, but I think we need to think carefully about all that. And, you know, I mean, we just recently had a discussion on some other issues related to homeowners associations. And underscored the point that individual unit owners will double pay for other things as well because they're part of an HOA. And, you know, I get that in this particular case, we're talking about a government service for the non-HOA communities, for the maintenance of their stormwater facilities, but the notion that an individual unit owner is sort of double paying for certain things is sort of already out there in the way that HOAs operate. And, you know, I, I sort of can't help but wonder if some of our HOA communities had more access over the past to, you know, training and consulting resources for handling assets and budgets. Maybe we'd be in a little bit of a better position today than we are. But, you know, that's, that's all. This was not intended as a pun, but that's all water under the bridge. But again, I think we need to think seriously about all these impacts and you know, whether it really makes sense for us to take on these big obligations, some of which could potentially be a bit open ended. And what the conversation about fees and revenues is going to look like later on, if we decide to pursue these. So anyway, sorry to take so much time, but I think this is an important conversation to have.
Thank you, Ryan. We'll go to Mike and then Lori and after Mike.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. And thanks. I mean, obviously, thank you for the presentation. It's a obviously a very complex problem as, as we've learned from Ryan's interrogation just now. Cross examination, I guess is the better term.
Interrogation.
No, it wasn't interrogation. I'll call it a cross examination. So and the issue of what's fair to a, a property, you know, a resident in a common ownership community as opposed to one that that doesn't live in one of those communities. I, I think if you look at what the, the fee for the individual homeowner is in both communities, they're going to vary. Depending on the amount of impermeable surface that they're obligated to, to pay for. I probably, you know, I my, the impermeable, the fee that I pay is based on impermeable on a lot that is 50 by 120 feet and some portion of it is impermeable, including, including the footprint of the house as opposed to a you know, a 20 by 45 foot footprint for a townhouse and a much smaller yard. It's a, a lot different, but they do, that, that homeowner then does contribute to the common property owned by the corporation of homeowners, I suppose. So, you know, I don't know, I don't know that I I'm not sure that I look at that as paying twice because they're basically paying for common amenities that everybody shares and responsible for that. So I guess I'm not so much worried about that. I'm more worried about the out year costs and how these are, what this obligates us, what our decision might obligate the city to as well. And as I look back, I think our responsibilities as a city is to comply with with managing our stormwater to reduce the total maximum daily load on the environment and limit that as much as possible. And so wherever our ability to meet that obligation is compromised, whether it's a, a non-HOA community or an HOA community, common ownership community, we're still responsible for that. So when I look at the chart or the table on when I look at the chart or the table on page 24, packet page 24, that shows us the the ages of the facilities that we're looking at. I think we have to remember that the oldest ones are probably the least efficient and the poorest designed, both in terms of terms of engineering and capacity. So those actually cost us more of compliance, whether or not we're paying for or the 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 common ownership community is paying for it. So and certainly some of those communities are probably in less good fiscal condition to be able to to upgrade and update their facilities and then even maintain them over a period of time. So certainly we have to come up with a solution for them. In a way, everybody in the city who every property owner resident in the city is is subsidizing that effort as well. You know, and every every homeowner, what it does regardless of what kind of community live on, they're subsidizing these facilities throughout the city, including our public facilities on our on our properties and facilities. So I guess what we want to look look at is the lowest potential impact in the long term for any property owner and any fee payer, because that's really what we're talking about and how to maintain that fee. So if I look at option, I think option three is the most comfortable because it basically hands this back. Once we make the, once we bring something up to current standards and more efficient, then it hands it back and hands responsibility back to the common owner ownership community. Whether that's realistic or not, I think we've just seen that argument that Ryan went through quite well from, you know, option one to option three. Nonetheless, I think we have to make those, you know, we're still going to have to make those decisions. So I think we do have a model from the county, whether that's the best one. Basically, the county is option one. Is that correct, Patrick?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. You know, I think they do that for variety of reasons, and I think the biggest reason is because they want to make sure that the county is in compliance with the law. And I think that allows the the easiest approach to monitoring that across across the board. I don't know that it's the best option for municipal government with with fewer resources than the county might have. So I would probably opt for option. I I would find option two perhaps a little bit better. Option three would be the best, but for me, but I I think this whole issue of the ability or inability of a community domain to maintain a facility, once it's been upgraded, still becomes an issue. But the point is, is that once that facility is upgraded, made more efficient and the design more standard up to current standards, it should be easier to comply with and and maintain hopefully, but so that's kind of where I am. And I do appreciate the regard for my council colleagues for a person who is not a a resident of a common ownership in a common ownership community. But I don't, I I think the difference is pretty the way I see it is I think the difference is pretty minimal in terms of the fee structure and the obligations of of each property owner, regardless of the community. I think they're pretty comparable. When I when I think about what the fee would be for the difference in the fee for what I pay and as as opposed to what Judd pays or Ryan or or Neil or Rob, so and Loriann, that's 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 how I'm looking at it. Anyway, that's kind of where I am. I know we're not, we're going to keep talking about this for a while. But I but again, thank you for the presentation and the details about it.
Thanks, Mike. We'll go to Loriann.
Thank you, Judd. Thank you again, Lynn, for the presentation. I just had a few questions about the the staff associated costs. Based on your first point, using some of the stormwater fund for not only staff costs, but associated expenses. I'm wondering if any of those staff related costs deal with training for the staff? And if that was accounted in the time that was included in the presentation?
So are you talking about the the staff costs in the initial part of the presentation?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so the training expenses are part of the direct expenses. Correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick and and Beth, but I think those are accounted for.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, alright. And then I had a question about the the staff time for outreach and engagement. You mentioned that additional information is additional information is needed for outreach and engagement. And is that for the community in general? Is that for potential vendors that we would work with? How is this? I guess the costs allocated or how do you plan for the cost since we're already addressing outreach and engagement? What additional costs would go towards this effort?
So staff looked at, so there's additional public education and outreach items that they would like to get done, which were on packet slide. Packet page. Eighteen. So those are things that they want to do but aren't currently doing. So staff did an exercise where they looked at how many additional hours they would need to do, need to to implement these programs. So that would include, you know, these addition additional public enhancements such as, you know, and the expansion of the Chesapeake Bay Trust program, you know, updating their keeping their website updated and the additional public outreach. So they looked at the additional time on an annual basis that it would take, and that's how we built the the estimated increase in cost.
And this would also come out of the fund as well as that where the associated costs would come from?
Yeah.
Okay. And then for the common ownership communities. All of these expenses that are currently absorbed by the communities, if we were to take them over, would they be on a reimbursement basis or how would the fees actually were the cost for paying for the improvements and maintenance?
That that would be option three would be the kind of the reimbursement program. So we we incur the cost upfront with, you know, ex ex executable agreement, and then they would reverse it, reimburse us over time. Yeah, so.
Like option three is the most cost effective option that was expressed. I just wanted to know about the I guess the challenges that we would face if we use this fund to reimburse staff costs based on the initial point that you asked about.
Challenges, you mean administrative challenges?
Administrative challenges, the sustainability of the fund. Are there concerns about the sustainability or?
Well, the the fee would need to be designed around the option that's selected. And as far as charging staff time back that, as I mentioned before, that that's not an issue. It's new for our for our city because we typically operate with one fund and most recently we've expanded to different funds. But a lot of communities have multiple funds and they have people who operate in all of those funds. And I think the most common approach I've seen is that you just assign a percentage amount that that position is, you know, 10% stormwater, it's, you know, 90% general fund or whatever other funds they work in. So the administrative piece of charging the time back isn't an issue. We have to figure out what our systems can and can't do and go with that. But as far as you mentioned, the option three is most cost effective. It it appears that way, right? Because it does demonstrate that we would collect everything that we spend in the time in which we expended, and there could be other challenges associated with that. So obviously pros and cons with with each each option.
Think we would also have to look at if we're doing option three, how we're doing the charge back to the owner of the HOA facility. There are some complexities with that. Not everything is as clean as an HOA is charged for the facility that their residents are part of because of the way water flows. And so there are some complexities with charge back that I think we'd have to look at what the costs associated with actually charging those fees back and how that would occur. I think it's much easier if we have agreements with the HOA that we've made the improvements, we're doing it, and then they're going to pay it back without charging it to a particular land parcel.
We also be expanding our grants that we have available now through our rain barrel programs with this fund allow us to or expand other stormwater maintenance efforts?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we would be looking to expand the the Chesapeake Bay Trust Grant Program, Rainscapes Program, and just general outreach with the community for for education purposes and you know, whether it be through the the website updates or bad example during COVID, but you know, doing more workshops out in the public and and things like that. So it's it's kind of all of the above. It's it's really trying to expand that reach program and involve the community.
Are we setting any goals? How many people we want to take advantage or are we?
Yeah, I I mean, I don't know, Beth, if you know any goals off the top of your head, I Mike Wyand with our group is is sort of in charge of the outreach port program in that portion. But yeah, if we're going to expand the program, obviously we need to have some quantifiable goals in in mind. And I do think it's it's kind of an iterative process. So, you know, we'll get feedback from the community, see what's working, what's not working, things like that.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, Neil's hand was up and then we'll go back to Ryan. Go ahead, Neil.
All right, thanks. So a couple of things. First of all, thanks for all the research and data that you provided and and the thoughtful approach of the department to doing more better. I think there's a lot of good ideas here that we should go through. I don't think we're going to come up with any firm answers on most of these questions until we see a bunch of numbers. I've been kind of going through and doing a mental spreadsheet of what the puts and takes look like here. And I think we need to do that at a greater length so that we understand what this is all going to cost. I think the first blush, based on the answers to the questions you gave me the last time I spoke, is that we're probably spending on an annual basis, at least over a five year period, less money than we're taking in right now. So there's a little bit of elbow room to do more if we want. But also, we're in recession. We're in a situation, thanks to COVID, that will probably reduce the city's revenue over the next couple of years and reduce the revenue of many of the residents of the city. So anything that's going to look like an increase in the fee or the average fee for for properties in the city would be something I'd be very concerned about at this time. I think it's just you you don't raise taxes and raise raise, take more money out of people's pockets when the the recession and the COVID situation is already taking money out. So I'll start there. We've got a little bit of elbow room, but I don't think we have a lot of elbow room. Second of all, we kind of went down a big rabbit hole with the common ownership communities question is taken up a lot of our conversation. I'd like to throw option four on the table just because it's more fun that way. But I'll tell you what my thinking is coming from. As a property owner, I have, my house has some commercial property in it, so I'm subject to the requirement of having an inspection coming through, coming in every year on the sprinkler systems and some other work. The inspector comes in, I pay the I pay a fee. They tell me what work needs to be done and I can hire them to do it or do it myself or get somebody else to do it. And I'm thinking of an option like that where on some periodic basis, a city inspector comes out to a common ownership community, inspects their property, gives them the results. They're either good or they need to do some work. And the city can say, we can do the work for you and it'll cost X. And here's how we'll pay for it. You'll pay for it and you can pay for it, you know, $100,000 a year and we'll you'll pay it on your stormwater fee bill over the next 10 years or however we want to do it and so on and so forth. Give them the option and if they have another another way to do it, then that's great. And as long as they pass the inspection when the work is finished. So something like that is similar to your option three. It doesn't require the city to take ownership, but it gives them gives the city the ability to offer a service. So I think that to me seems workable. It may not be practical. You guys are the experts, but I thought I I wanted to throw it out there because it seems like something that people are used to.
I I view it as being difficult to. I like the idea in theory. I I think it would be difficult to project, you know, future years because we don't know who's going to accept and who's not going to accept, but but I mean, that's really just a forecasting issue, but.
But I don't, I just don't think that we can force anybody to accept because this is their property and their responsibility, right? So today, if if you came to community X and said, we want to, we're going to take over your stormwater facility. If they wanted to, they could hire some lawyers and probably win. So I think it's got to be optional. I mean, unless Lynn Board knows something I don't know, which is.
Met Lynn, so I can't assume that anybody would win against Lynn. I I think some of the challenge of the the analogy is, you know, with the sprinkling. Well, that actually might not fit, but thinking about an external body that holds the city responsible for the mandate, which is which is where this ends, right? So we ultimately, we're still responsible. And so we complicate the the rate model by having, you know, some a lot of uncertainty in future costs because there's an option. So that gets complicated on that side, and we are still exposed from a risk side for not being compliant with our permit. So those are, those would be the challenges that jump out for me with with the option for, I don't know if I'm, those, that's what jumps out for me. I'm sure the staff that's steeped in this has probably more to add.
Yeah, I think that's really a finance question is how do you finance these future, these payments if we're going to pay something today? And we get reimbursed over 10 years. We don't want to run out of money. We want to manage cash flow, but I think there are ways to accommodate that, especially with the city's financial condition. So.
Not not necessarily the forecasting from that perspective, Neil, but when we set a rate, right, that we're trying to, we're trying to accommodate all future costs. And there's always some element of unknown there, but if it's almost, you know, what if they decide today, yes, or and then they're out the next year, we've set the rate? Do we continue to, you know, to adjust the rate to accommodate those fluctuations in individual property owner decisions?
So Tanisha, let me make it, let me clarify it because I I think that's showing that I wasn't making myself clear. What I'm suggesting is on option four that once we do the inspection, we tell the community that they need some work done and we think it's $100,000 worth of work. It's their responsibility to pay for it, whether they pay us to do the work over a 10 year period or whatever the arrangement is, or whether they do it themselves, it's fine, but it shouldn't impact us from a rate point of view at all. It should be a completely separate transaction.
Well, we're still pay as you go, Neil. I mean, we in in if they're paying us back over a period of time, that means we're fronting it. So we have to have the the money coming in for the fee and yet, but we don't know how much. but we don't know how much money we need because we don't know how many communities will take advantage of this service. To me, it adds another level of murkiness to an already murky situation. We don't, we don't know how much we need to to raise already, partially because the the state changes what the what the requirements are. So I I think, yes, it is a financing question. But it's 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 a difficult one. It's a it's a real, it's a it's a real one. I mean, we would have to front all this work. That's that, that's the way I see it. It's complicated. I see where you're going with it, but it's it it just adds a level of complication. Did you have more, Neil, or should we go to Ryan?
Let's let's go to Ryan. I could use a half an hour break.
Ouch. Okay, Ryan, go ahead and then and then.
Greatest hits. So, yeah, I mean, first of all, we need to understand that even if our what we're talking about right now is five years out and 10 years out, as Tanisha kind of referenced, I mean, this is an open ended obligation. And as I recall from past years of our discussion of projections of, you know, what this is going to end up costing us in the distant out years, the the expenditures become much more significant. I don't know if that's still true in our models, but I I assume it is. So even if we have a little breathing room in terms of the amount of money we're taking in on the fee in a given year now and the amount we're spending, you know, part of the question is how much do we need to be holding back for those distant out years in order to grow the pot that we have, right? I mean, that's still the case, right? Okay, because I mean, I remember seeing really big numbers a few years ago when we were looking at the out year projections 10, 15 years from now, $40 million and that kind of stuff.
But also, Ryan, to that point, we the MS four permit details were still unclear to us at that point, too.
Right, you you beat me to it, Mayor, and that was the next point I was going to make. And you kind of also mentioned a minute ago, the permit changes. And we were operating under certain expectations of what the permit was going to require of us. And our most recent renewed permit didn't require quite what we thought it was going to. And so now we're operating on certain assumptions. And five years from now, when we renew the permit again, it may be totally different than what we're expecting it to require of us. It may be much stricter, it may be much more lenient. And so, you know, there's so many unknowns here, even beyond the unknowns that we've already discussed that make it difficult to justify, you know, compiling a whole bunch of cash for future expenditures. But at the same time, we know we're going to have some kind of significant obligation. And then the other comment I just wanted to make was with reference to the earlier discussion about equity. One, one other thing to keep in mind is that many HOAs, common ownership communities within our city don't have any stormwater facilities in their community that they own. So they're not, they're not paying for that at all. Some HOA communities do. And, you know, I'm I'm thinking about concerns of precedent. And, you know, we've got this state and federal mandate when it comes to stormwater. But there are, there have been other times when common ownership communities have come to us and said, we have a, we have a facility on our property that's technically owned by the HOA but needs city funding to maintain or repair it. And we've said no. And we have to be prepared to sort of defend a distinction between doing that in one case and in the case of stormwater facilities, maybe having a different approach for maybe for perfectly good reasons, but to be able to explain that distinction to communities that otherwise don't have stormwater facilities and therefore wouldn't benefit from us pursuing one of these options. So just something to think about.
Thank you, Ryan. We're going to Mike.
Yeah, I want to go back to option four, which I actually am intrigued by. And I guess the point is, is if if we do it, if an inspection, the outcome of an inspection is that work needs to be done. A facility needs to be improved or upgraded or replaced. Whether an organization or whether the the common ownership community asks, wants to pay the city to do it or pay somebody else to do it, they're going to have to finance it. There's no reason the city should finance it upfront. You know, so I guess I'm not as worried about that particular issue about the city fronting that that bill because it's the responsibility of that of the business arrangement for that entity to to come up with a way to pay for it. If they went to anybody else, they would have to do that. They would have to find a way to finance it or or draw it from their own reserves if they had them. So that's, that's really all I had to add. I I I not so worried about the fact that some communities don't have stormwater facilities because they were never was never part of the original design when it was approved and others needed the such facilities just because of the topography of the of the the project and to get their their plan approved. So it's you know, that fact, or that's the legacy of the original plan for that community rather than something intentional. And there's not much that we can do about that.
Thanks, Mike. We're going to Neil.
All right, I wanted to chat a little bit about more of an accounting question, I guess. I'm sorry. But in terms of reimbursing other departments for their work on stormwater, is that something that we, as far as I can tell, it's not something that we do for other projects? For example, we don't charge the Parks and Recreation Department for work that the Police Department and Public Works does on events. Is that's that's correct? Is that is that right, Tanisha?
Yeah, that's correct. And their their general fund, they're they're in the same fund, right?
Right, so so the first, the question on that one is why would we? Why should we do that here? And the second question, I don't want an answer right now. I'm just that that's more of a philosophical policy question that we need to answer. The second piece of that puzzle is how much work is that is being done by the stormwater staff was being done before we had to come into compliance with this new permitting process? In other words, before we were required to to do all this retrofitting and maintenance work that wasn't in the place before. So out of the $690,000 a year in staff time was where we already, did we already have 100,000 or some amount of staff that was being that was working on other stormwater related projects?
Yes, maybe Dennis, Dennis can answer that one probably better.
I'm not sure I can give you a number. In terms of, you know, there are various components of stormwater program, right? So there's actually review of design plans. So when developers come in and propose new developments like Crown or other things, there is a certain degree of staff time that's spent reviewing those plans, accepting those plans, facilitating those plans. That was done previously. In addition, as the site develops, there's also the site development inspector who would be responsible to make sure that the silt fences up, they're complying with all the regulations and those are in the, you know, is in the building code side. So that wasn't.
Those aren't in the Public Works Department, correct?
The review is in the Public Works Department. Stormwater does do the development review. That has always been in the Public Works Department originally. The site has always been with the Building Inspections Department. So we used to have approximately two and a half staff, I believe, related to those kind of components along with our MS four permit. You know, we always had an MS four permit for a really long time since I think the 1980s. And Beth can correct me. You know, that was a new regulation for a lot of jurisdictions, depending on their size of the community. So as we've grown, we've moved into a new bracket. And also EPA has created new brackets as time has gone on. So I don't know the exact dollar amount, Neil.
I wasn't looking for an exact number. I was just looking for, you know, was it zero before or did we start from the base? The what I'm trying to get at is just thinking about what's fair in terms of how we're going to view the stormwater, this pot of money that we collect and whether the pot needs to get bigger or smaller is going to be based on how much staff time, how much direct costs that we have, how much indirect costs that we're willing to allocate into this and whether or not we're willing to fund new programs. So I'm just trying to get an idea of is the baseline 690? Is it maybe less than that? What's what's fair and or do we want to include the several hundred thousand dollars of other departments? So I just want to get clear. And again, I'm just picturing this as some big spreadsheet that in my mind, I don't think the number should get beyond about the four and a half million dollars a year that we're already charging people for the fee. But that's a decision that we can make as we go forward.
And in terms of the larger question, you know, we've approached to some degree, the stormwater fund and program as an enterprise fund. So basically, under those concepts, you should be paying for all the expenses that you have related to that program. When we did the first permit go around, we did not necessarily allocate that staff time. But I will point out that up until this year, we were providing a subsidy to the stormwater fund to kind of cover some of those costs and other costs associated with the program. I think as we have readjusted the program, we've reduced that operational subsidy down because of permit changes and other items. So there's always been up until this fiscal year, some operating funds going directly to the stormwater fund not being collected under the stormwater.
Well, having been involved in the discussion where we put that formula together, I would differ with you a little bit on where that came from. If you recall, there was some sentiment on the council. I think our late great council member Marafa didn't want a separate stormwater fee, wanted all the money to come out of the general fund, which would have meant a bit of a tax increase, but spreading out the cost throughout all property owners and income taxpayers in the city. And and the staff recommendation at the time was that 100% of the stormwater cost should come out of the fee. And this was a bit of a compromise where I think a million dollars of it came from general funds and the rest came from from the stormwater fee, just to try to balance it out so that it didn't hit so hard on the property owners and taxpayers.
That is, that is correct, compensating for some of the things that we were doing. Others.
And I understand that the, you know, taking a million dollars a year out of the general fund for this is painful for the people putting our budget together and I respect that. So but we just, you know, we did. Again, I think in the current fiscal environment that we're in and are likely to be in for the next year or two, I'd be very concerned over any program that makes those numbers go up with any amount of significance. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Neil. Before anybody else raises their hand, we have a couple. Well, we have one member of the public and I wanted to, I wanted to give him a chance if he was interested in testifying. And he is. Okay, tech team, will you please bring up Dave Belgard? And Dave, we asked you to state your name and address or neighborhood and speak for no more than three minutes. And if you have more than three minutes worth of stuff to tell us, just submit it in writing. Just unmute yourself and go right ahead. State your name and address or nickname.
Dave Belgard, Washington Woods. Thank you, Mary Ashman. And I had no idea I was the only one here, but happy to be here. I do want to say that that the idea of an option four sounded very interesting. And I do hope that you guys further discuss that as at least an interesting point. But I did want to bring up a few items. The the environmental effects of poor stormwater management, they they don't just affect the neighborhood where the 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 issue happens, but the whole city and even possibly greater surrounding area. I think it's further something to consider that the city has a responsibility to its residents, regardless of what neighborhood they're in, to ensure clean water and limited environmental damages. Not only a great deal of responsibility of residents, but also the various agencies. And you guys have talked about that, that have policies and rules that you must follow. So you got a lot of responsibility. But in, you know, some of these areas, very little control, which you know, seems to me that it speaks towards option one. And I and and I know that everyone's been discussing kind of the finances of that. The one thing to consider is that there's city finances and there's residence, resident finances. And regardless of who pays for it, it gets paid for. If the city, if the city maintains it, then that's that's coming out of city coffers, which are, you know, paid by various taxes. And the stormwater fee is a fairly progressive fee because it's based on property size. Yeah, if it's a, if the HOA has to pay for it, then a single community may may have to suddenly come up with a great deal of money, which could be a significant burden. I just kind of want to bring up some of those thoughts that have occurred to me while you've had your discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate your your comments and I see, Mike, did you put a hand up in the raised hand?
No, I should have taken it down, sorry.
Okay. So staff and our consultants, Lynn and Elizabeth, I see we have another slide. Let me see, we have, we have one more slide where we're sort of looking to tie this all up with a bow. Go ahead, I'll let you talk us through it.
So our next steps are to do the rate model analysis based on finalized stormwater program. And we can do options within that. I mean, we need to limit the number of options based on our scope. But then we plan to present those rate impacts of the stormwater program and options back to you at the council meeting on March 22.
Okay, thank you very much. So I, Tanisha, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, you may have been headed in that direction, Jen. I was just going to ask, as you, as you heard, Lynn Maury just pointed out, you know, we do have a scope in place with the current with their with this project. And we've presented three options that we recognize are difficult to pin down without you've seen the impact on the rate. Is there perhaps an appetite to eliminate maybe one option? Or do you all feel that all three options and now potentially a fourth option is is something that you strongly need, want us to evaluate?
Well, I heard, let's see. Council was kind of all over the place here. I I heard a couple. As for Mike, I thought I heard sort of option two might be a direction. But then he expressed interest in in Neil's suggestion, the the additional option for. Rob seemed to be option one or two for equity reasons, not three, one. Okay. Loriann, if I was reading you right, seemed like you were more in favor of option three. And Ryan, were you an option, option three preference?
I'm frankly, not really committed to any specific one at this point without having more discussion about the the numbers. But I think because of the cost impacts, I probably more likely to be in the two or three or option four as suggested by Neil category than in the option one.
Okay, and and Neil?
I don't know if this fits with the engagement, but I'd like to look at everything before we look at the common ownership community, look at everything up to that point. And the common ownership community is much too complicated to do, to bundle in together with everything else.
Well, okay, fair enough. But if if we were to ask staff to come in our consultant Lynn to come back to us at the March meeting, having run fee numbers for a couple of options, what would those couple options be? If we're not going to narrow it down to one, well, you know, what's your first and second choice?
I don't think we can afford option one. I mean, it's a, it's a huge expense. It would, it would essentially double our stormwater fee or have to come out of an increase in taxes for the citizenry. So I think I'd have to rule that out immediately. The others are worth looking at, but I think I think I could share with you some notes on how to make option four work, but.
Okay, all right, we'll leave that up to staff. Mike, I saw your hand go up, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to suggest I I don't, I'm, I don't find option one very compelling. Yeah, I was going to suggest I, I don't, I'm, I don't find option one very compelling. It, it's the most costly and I think down the line it will continue to be that, you know, Neil already explained why it doesn't make sense. So I, I would get rid of option one and let's work on the other three, including the new option four.
Okay, Rob, and then we'll go to Elizabeth.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So again, I, I'm in favor of option one. I'm not necessarily wedded to the city taking on the stormwater facility. So let me throw out an option five, which I'm, I think is going to get immediately booed because it's tied to rate structures. So again, HOAs pay for their stormwater facilities, then they pay for everybody else's stormwater facilities. And so why don't we propose a bifurcated rate structure where the HOAs get to get reimbursed or it's backed out of their fees for the amounts they pay for their stormwater management facilities, kind of as an equity matter.
Staff, are you clear on how that would work? Based on what Rob just described?
I think I understand where he's coming from. Again, I want to caution that even figuring out how HOA pays back gets really complicated based on how water flows. You know, not all water flows from one HOA to their pond. One HOA may flow to multiple ponds, some of them they own and some of them another HOA owns. And so the rate structure gets much more complicated when you're talking about paying back or creating a different rate structure based on where the water flows and where you're getting credit. Because I don't know how else to explain it other than to say, you know, it's not like every HOA is self-contained in their stormwater facilities. That just doesn't happen based on how water flows.
Well, I mean, you're, Dennis, on that point, well taken, but water flows in different directions, including from non-HOA communities to HOA communities. So I don't think we can base rates off of the way the water flows. It's just a matter of, again, the HOAs are paying for their own stormwater management facilities and they're paying for the, the, the general stormwater management in the entire city, which includes the non-HOA communities. And so, you know, I hear this conversation about increasing taxes. Well, you know, the HOAs, for all intents and purposes, are already paying additional amounts. So more than their fair share compared to those that are not paying for their own stormwater facilities and, but paying for the, the rest of the city. So I'm just throwing that out there as a matter of equity.
And Lynn and Elizabeth might be able to kind of wait because they're the ones who are going to have to create the rate model too. So they might give you a little bit more feedback on how that might happen.
Well, I, I want to go to Elizabeth anyway because she had her hand up.
I just wanted to make a couple of points of clarification around the cost after Councilman Harris raised the issue of this almost doubling the fee. In fact, what we presented to you was a 10-year cost, not an annual cost. So the current revenue is, is in the 4 million, a little more than that, that is generated annually. We're talking about about a 9% difference. So it's around $300,000 a year, not 3 million. The 3 million number was a 10-year projection of cost. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that option one numbers we presented, though that they certainly are the largest. Over time, it, it was not an annualized number you saw. It was a 10-year number in those, in those projections. I think it's also important to realize that all three of those options requires the city to have the outlay of expenditures, whether it's option one, based on the community taking ultimate responsibility for the facility in perpetuity, or whether it's option three, where someone pays the community back. All of them require that upfront capitalization cost. The city is on the hook to pay for all those repairs, whether it's as a long-term cost or whether it's on a reimbursable basis. There's still the cash outflow for those repairs to be accomplished. So I, I don't want you to lose sight of the fact that we gave you a net number for the third option, which is cost minus the payback. So it, it's more complicated. You can tell I'm the one who does the financial stuff. So the analysis is more complicated than, than the sort of streamlined summary we provided to you. So I, I wanted you to be sure to realize whether you're talking about new option four. There's still the commitment to expend dollars on a program of services that you're currently not doing, whether you get reimbursed for it or whether you do a long-term commitment. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Rob, go ahead.
Thanks. Just, just real quickly, on that point, it seemed like the differential between option one and option three was give or take 100,000 a year. It's only a point that I forgot to mention. Ryan's concern is well taken regarding the risks of taking on infrastructure and the, the unknown unknowns of, of future expenses and cost ballooning. And so I, I would be, you know, kind of following the, the, the thought pattern that I just had of, of, you know, a fee differentials. If, if we were to adopt something that would provide equity to the HOAs for, again, paying for their own stormwater management facilities and the general, but not taking control of their facilities, it would give us the option in the future i- if, if the costs do balloon or we do have a different policy decision or the permits change to address that at that point in time. So it would be kind of a, a risk mitigation idea, but still address that equity idea as well. So I just want to throw that out there.
Thanks, Rob. Dennis, go ahead.
I just want to clarify that we do kind of have a system like, it's actually a credit system. So HOAs that have ponds that contribute to our stormwater fee fund and meet certain criteria, they do get a credit. We haven't had very many accept that credit. So there could be a possibility that we do a better job of helping them get that credit. But it, it's really based upon the TD, the actual flows out of the facility as opposed to the overall stormwater fund. What I want to say, the credit's based upon, you know, what credits we're getting in relationship to our permit or the TMDLs. But there is kind of that system already set up, Robs. So I'm not sure, you know, a new system would be warranted for that. I do know that, you know, and staff can chime in, we haven't had a lot of HOAs take us up on those credits because it does require some engineering on their side, expenditure, expenditures to show that their facilities are in order.
Beth, did I see your hand go up?
I think it was the number one.
Oh, okay.
One HOA as.
But you were unmuted, so you got to go back to.
Yeah, we've only had one HOA get, ask for credits and get them. We had another one ask recently and they were kind of weighing the engineering costs of the inspection that they would need to apply. And they were kind of leaning towards why bother? It's, it, it's almost a wash for them.
Thank you. Okay, Rob.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. We just keep adding more topics. Dennis, you and I had that conversation. We already had, we had a conversation also about, you know, for example, the possibility of providing individual houses credits for putting rain barrels and stuff like that. And it just seems to be, I think your assessment was it was, the incentive wasn't there and the, the issues with us managing that kind of program and the benefit we get for the credits was just not worth it. So I, I would ask just, you know, take a look, is there a way to not necessarily tie it to the credits received? Because the, again, the incentive needs to be there, but to the cost outlays by the HOAs to, to maintain their stormwater facilities. Because that's really what the fees are, are paying for. We're paying into a general fund to, you know, maintain, repair or expand stormwater facilities across the city. I'm sorry. That, that's it. That's all I got.
Okay, so I, I was sensing though, in this for Tanisha and Dennis, I was sensing that at least it seems that we have, we have one vote for option one, but I think we have four votes that would take that particular option off the table. So at least that sort of narrows it a little bit. But then we are expanding the scope with options four and five. So how many, how many options can we run fee numbers for? How many? How can we proceed here? I, it, it seems we're not coalescing around one of the given options necessarily.
Our scope has five options.
Dennis, were you going to say something too?
No, I was just going to answer the question, but let her answer it.
Okay.
I mean, you, you, you have two options already on the table. Don't forget about the other two options that we've talked about, which are the beginning ones. We've spent a lot of time focusing on the HOAs. But there's also the outreach option, which is one option, right? So we'd be adding that particular scope in terms of the rate model that's not currently included. And then the first discussion or the second discussion, which is staff is another. So as long as we end up with kind of three options on the HOA, the common ownership communities, we should be good. I think we're kind of there. We have option two and three. I think option four and option five are really kind of a funding mechanism, right? As Elizabeth points out, either way, we still have to raise capital to do the improvements. So staff could take a harder look at the complexity of those two different models because I would say they have different complexities to them from a, a staffing time and how we would build those back. So I think you're there. If you're eliminating option one, we would kind of lump four and five together. They're just different ways to pay for it or how you collect the money, basically.
I could be wrong, but I don't know if we, I thought I heard that there was support for expanding the education and outreach program, that there seemed to be consensus around that. So if that's the case, that's not an option we need to mo- model. That just goes into the base program. Is that right, Lynn or Elizabeth?
No, that's true. We would expand the program and just include it in all models.
Right. So that would go in all models. I had asked and, and they were already down the path a bit, even before I asked about modeling, you know, having this be a true enterprise fund, as Dennis talked about earlier, which would include all costs associated with the program, including staff that are outside of the department and their expenses. So we talked about potentially modeling, including it or not including it as an option. We didn't, I didn't, I didn't get here a consensus around that. So that to me sounds like we've got one non-HOA option already that needs to be modeled. Is that where you were headed, Dennis? I just want to make sure we were both on the same page there.
Yeah, I mean, I thought I heard consensus on the outreach. I didn't hear consensus necessarily on including all staff time. So other components, so that would be an option. And then we would have the other options to explore for the HOA or common community.
That, I agree. I agree with that because I think that the concern from the council was that it's really hard, unless we see the impact on, on the fee of the, of the enterprise staffing consideration, then it's hard to make that, it's hard to give direction on it yet. Neil, go ahead.
So a quick question about the model. What, is this going to be an Excel spreadsheet or is something else? Is it going to be something that, once it's produced, we can do a little bit of fiddling with if we want to?
I guess it depends on how you define fiddling with.
If you come up with a model that, that pushes up the fee and we don't want to push up the fee, can we delete one entry?
Oh, of course, of course. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. In that case, staff, do you feel guided?
Yes. Yeah, I do. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Well, then we've successfully gotten this far and we'll see where we get in March. But we really appreciate all of the work that it's taken for you guys to get us here. Patrick, welcome. And we look forward to working with you a lot in, in the future in this program that, that we've seen from its infancy and, and every year comes back to us. And so we, so we look forward to working with you and, and Beth, of course, and thank you, Lynn and Elizabeth. I will remind everyone that we have, our, next week, we have a regular meeting of mayor and council. It is not on Monday because of the holiday. It is on Tuesday evening, 7:30 PM, wherever you're watching our meetings. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.